Okay, wonderful. Let's get started with our calendar work session. You will note, this is the only thing that stands between us and lunch. So, we will keep it as quick as possible. You will note on the documents on Board Docs that there are two questions that remain for us in this session. But first, Dr. Ramey is going to walk us through the input that they have taken in from community feedback and implemented in this, as well as what we request, the information we requested at our previous work session. So with that, Dr. Ramey.
Good morning. This is a follow-up to our work session in November. Following that work session, as we discussed then, we posted one calendar for the board to consider, which at the time was Calendar D. We've removed that. But this is the calendar that we came to consensus, or the board came to consensus on in November. We have not received a great deal of additional feedback on the calendar since it's been posted. As Mr. McLeven referred to, there are two points that are on the One Page Business Case. One was to look at an option for Veterans Day, and the second was to look at options for staff development on religious holidays. We did get feedback both from our community partners and Voice, and also STACK around the religious days. And one of the things that came to us from both groups, and really Voice, what Voice was looking for from us, said, you know, "We would like you to encourage both your students and staff to celebrate those days more than to look at the days differently. Just let your communities know that you want them to take that time with their families and to celebrate those holidays." And we do have a very good religious leave policy in place that allows for individuals to take those times, and we will continue to do that. And also STACK, when we talked to them about moving to Professional Development Days, they said, "Now you're putting our employees in the position of having to choose whether or not to get professional development that you're also saying is very important, or to go and observe their religious celebrations." And they just wanted us to be conscious of that. And so I think, again, regardless of where we move those days, I do want the board to know that we have policies and procedures in place that will allow our staff, as well as our students, to take time for those celebrations. Dr. Braybrand, did you want to?
Just to share, I know many of you already have the calendar out, but the One Page Business Case is also very helpful. There were two options, and you can see in the One Pager, we've got both up front for you to consider. In terms of the Veterans Day, Columbus Day, we could revise the calendar to basically designate or swap the day that is Columbus Day with Veterans Day. It is not in the current calendar, but this is part of what we heard at the work session, and we have that in the Business Case as one option. And then there is an option for staff development around religious holidays. Given all the feedback that Dr. Ramey said, we still want you to be aware, we did look at the calendar and said that we could do a switch with one of the Fridays in September, and instead make that on Wednesday, Yom Kippur, as the Staff Development Day Early Release for Kids. So those are two options within the Option D calendar that we sent you, and I just want to make sure you're aware of that in the One Pager Business Case.
And that's correct. That's where I was going to go. They're written in a way that if a board member would like to make that as an amendment on Thursday night, we can definitely do that, and it would require very little change to the calendar. The other piece is to talk about the pay cycle for our teachers and their 10-month employees. Mr. McLeven, I don't know if that's something you want me to do now, or if you want to wait until... Okay. We have conducted a survey of our 10- and 11-month staff with providing an option. Right now, given where we are, in terms of the year, the budget cycle, and next summer quickly approaching, the viable option at this point would be to move our 10-month employees from receiving 10 paychecks to receiving 11 paychecks. They're currently paid September through June. We would add a pay frequency in August. We surveyed our employees over the last week, and the response has been rather overwhelming. Actually, we received almost 12,000 responses from our 10-month employees. Sorry?
I just wanted the board to hear, 12,000.
12,000, correct. And 75% favored us moving to an 11-month pay cycle for those employees. So that is something that we are preparing to put into process, but we need to start moving on it quickly, given the systems implementations it has for us. We need to start that process as soon as possible. And so unless there's objection from the board, we will begin making preparations to do that, begin advertising that for our employees. One thing we tried to make clear in the survey, and we understand that communication is crucial here, is that this is not a bonus check, right? We're just spreading their payout differently. And so it results in about a 9% decrease in the amount of dollars on each paycheck. And so we want to give our employees as much leave time as possible and communicate that as much upfront as we can, so they're prepared for that, that even though they're getting a paycheck in August, the amount of those paychecks will be reduced slightly. The other thing that it will create is that if we are to lose the waiver, given the snow days, and we go back to a post-Labor Day start, again, we would revert back to that 10-day, 10-month pay cycle at that time. Open for questions.
Okay, great. So we have three on the list, Elizabeth, Sandy, and Janie. So let's start with Elizabeth.
So one of the things that I tried to do was share the Prince William County calendar, and I'm looking at their current calendar. And the reason is, is that we're very closely aligned, you know, in many different ways. And they have Columbus Day as a Professional Development Day, so their students have it off, and they have the two days for the election, and they have Veterans Day. So I'm trying to figure out, was there an effort to try to look at what they were doing and to figure out? Because it sort of creates a false narrative. If your only option, and I appreciate the fact that there's an alternative, but the only option is to go for a dead run from August 28th, you know, you've got the Labor Day, but a clear run until, you know, November without a break, and that's your only chance. You have that, or you have Veterans Day, and there's no other option. And that, to me, doesn't seem to be particularly, you know, that's... There's a false dichotomy that that's the only choice. So why are we still in this boat that that's the only option?
It's not necessarily the only option. I think one of the things that was paramount to our employees and to the administration was that we have this focus on professional development. And one of the things that came through clearly when we did the Professional Development Needs Assessment was more professional development at the beginning of the year. And so we've front-loaded two more of our Professional Development Days this year than we have in the past. That could have been a day that could have traditionally been taken as a full Professional Development Day in October, which would give that break, Ms. Schultz. But by adding two of our Professional Development Days that had traditionally been in the middle of the calendar to the beginning before school starts, it takes away some of those days to break that up.
Yes, see, again, I'm looking at the Professional Development Calendar for Prince William, and it's very heavily front-loaded. And so I'm at a little bit of a loss that there's a lack of creativity going on here. I will also say that I was surprised, I've had two Citizen Town Halls just after Dr. Braybrand's Region Five community listening, and the degree of pushback that I'm getting around the three-hour release is a lot. And it's a lot not only from educators who say, "Look, you're going to bring kids..." Basically, particularly at elementary level, "You're going to transport a whole lot of kids to get them to school, to have, you know, one or two periods, to go to lunch, and basically go back home." And that they don't feel like that's a productive... And I understand that there was solicitation from teachers and the principals around how to improve the professional development. But many teachers have told me they don't find that that is a productive academic day for children. And many families are telling me this is wreaking havoc on a childcare situation. On how on earth, you know, six times additionally in the calendar year, you know, I mean, you could potentially look at wiping out somebody's vacation time with six additional days, where if they can't find, you know, for three-hour early out, you know, you have families that are taking leave to cover that. And for some reason, there is a profound difference in a two versus a three-hour early out, and to have that many. And so I'm highly disinclined at this point to do the three-hour early out based on the amount of feedback that I've gotten. Because, you know, one, not entirely... Okay, it may be best for getting professional development. I'm not entirely sure it's best for kids, and I'm definitely sure that it's not best for families. So I don't know that weighing the options for getting, you know, one hour additional of professional development sprinkled through the year warrants wreaking that much havoc on families. And I don't know that we're doing kids a benefit. And with those two, I'm a little bit disinclined at this point to go this way.
Okay, Sandy?
We hadn't heard a lot of that feedback, so that's good for us to hear. In all honesty, when we looked at those dates, we took families into consideration. That was one of the reasons we put them on Fridays rather than the middle of the week. While it creates disruption, we thought it might create less, but it just hasn't been a lot of the feedback, so it's good.
I specifically asked them, I said, "Well..." Because I explained that those would qualify as a day under our 180-day. And they said, "We'd rather have two full Professional Development Days given to teachers, allow our kids to go full day the other four days, and add two days." They were more willing to go two more days, calendar days, at the end of the year than to slowly wreak havoc over the course of the year. So that was a conversation I've had with many at this point.
And then one other thing, sorry, I was finally able to pull up the Prince William Calendar when we were sitting. The other contributing factor, it looks like, if I'm reading this right, and I haven't studied it very long, Prince William only has seven days over the winter break, and we have two complete weeks, 10 days. And so that's another thing that allows them a little more flexibility, is if you're not taking that two full weeks, you can spread those out a little more. That was one of the original suggestions. And I think Version A or Version B of the calendar was to shorten that winter break and look at some of those smaller breaks along the way. But that's one of the other contributing factors as well.
Okay, Sandy, followed by Janie and Dahlia.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you doing the teacher pay. I know that there were a number of teachers very concerned about that, and I've had students actually bring that up too, feeling like, "These teachers having to wait that long." Do you need anything from the board to do that, or you can just go ahead and do that without authorization? You don't need an amendment for that?
No.
Okay, all right, well, I totally support that. I think that makes a lot more sense. We've heard also from teachers about some of the dates being blackout dates. What's the situation with that now?
So they are not, if you look at the calendar that's in front of you in that legend box down at the bottom in the right, we've changed that. We've taken that blackout language off. We have put required PD. Teachers are required to come to work every day, but we do want to emphasize the importance of those days. But we are not, at this point, restricting the appropriate use of leave on those days.
All right. And I certainly, I'm glad we're doing that as well. I think we do want to make sure that our teachers are treated as the professionals they are. So thank you for making that change.
I will use that little "and" to say, though, we do need to look at our leave use. We need to have this conversation as an organization. Already, through the first three or four months of the school year, our substitute requests are up over 6,000 from last year alone. And so, you know, we don't know exactly what's causing that, but we've seen significant increases the last two years. And we hear a lot about fill rates, but when our requests are skyrocketing at the rate they are, we'll have extreme difficulty, no matter what we do, filling those. And so at some point, we are going to have to have a very honest conversation about our leave policies, our leave regulations, and how we do keep our staff in front of our students and in our school buildings on a daily basis.
Well, we do, and I'm glad you're pursuing the reasons for that. You know, that would be important. Do they tend to be on Professional Development Days, or is that the pattern?
They tend to be high on Fridays and Mondays.
Okay, all right. So you're going to dig deeper into that. So on the religious holidays, I'm looking at the calendar, and I think we've gotten a break of sorts on the Muslim holidays in that this calendar, they're not student days. Eid al-Fitr is on the 14th and 15th of June, so I think we're squared away on that. And the other is in August before the beginning of the school year. So I think we are okay on that, at least for this, I mean, for this year. And now for the other idea about Yom Kippur putting an early release day. I do need some clarity on something. The SD here, it says, "Staff Development Day, Student Holiday." So is September... Well, okay, so, I'm sorry. SP, Student Planning Day, School Planning Day, Student Holiday.
It should actually say Student Early Release, because it's not technically a student holiday.
Oh, okay, that's what I was, okay. So it's Student Early Release, that's what was confusing me. Okay, so it's not a holiday. I guess I would be inclined to move the September 21st Early Release to September 18th to at least give a bit of a break for our students who are celebrating Yom Kippur. But I would be, and I'm happy to offer an amendment for that if there's support from my colleagues on the board. So I would put that out to my colleagues as to whether they would support such an amendment.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Janie, Dahlia, and Nehirika.
Thanks. First of all, I have a question. The TW, that's Teacher-Directed Planning Time. Okay.
Yes.
So in the SD, that is the centrally-directed?
Yes, and so the staff development is centrally-directed. The school planning is supposed to be school-directed. And the TW are teacher workdays. However, the regulations do allow for there to be collaboration at the building. And so it's not just technically a free day. There are some guidelines about what schools can do in terms of working with their teachers. But yes, it should, for the most part, be teacher-directed.
Okay, great. I don't support changing Columbus Day or the Veterans Day. I still find, for the families that I talk to, the families being able to come into school on whatever the federal holiday is, it enables them to come and fully participate in the school activities, where they've said that if they, you know, would have to take a day off of work, they couldn't come in. And I have lots of active military, retired military, who come in and be a part of the school activities. So I very much support the teacher pay piece. We've heard a lot about that, so that teachers can get their paychecks in a more regular way. I am less inclined to rearrange the calendar for... It is important that our individual schools, teachers, classrooms, what have you, are very careful about how they plan field trips, large work assignments that are due, and tests. That's critical. That makes a big difference to our kids. I am less inclined to actually change the actual hours of the day. And thank you very much for giving us the feedback. The attendance rates, that's very helpful, so that we can kind of see, you know, how that works. But again, the attendance rates are such that I am not inclined to actually change the overall calendar, but making sure that schools are very sensitive, and particularly when we know we have students who are fasting, or, you know, students who are going to participate in their religious activities. So other than that, I actually support the calendar as it is proposed.
Ms. Strauss, to your point, we do send out something quarterly that reminds schools of the different events. And I should have said this off the top, and I've heard the feedback from the board, we are going to work on publishing a calendar, not only sending that quarterly reminder, but publishing a quarter, the calendar, excuse me, that denotes those days on the calendar so we can see it. We've just been, I know, Dahlia, we've just been waiting to finalize on one calendar before we do that. So publishing that on the website that has it delineated.
And I think sometimes when we have new principals who are new to a community, that's where I kind of see things falling apart. They don't realize that they may have a significant enough student population in a particular religious practice, that they don't understand that if they are not careful about this, they're going to run into trouble. So I think particularly with new principals, that's very, very important.
Okay, thank you, Janie. Next, Dahlia.
I think Dr. Braybrand wanted to jump in here.
Just 10 seconds, because Ms. Strauss said it. The One Pager does have some of the key religious holidays as you're all having this discussion, and the attendance rates, along with our division average attendance rate, if you want to be able to look at that as you all have your discussions.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I appreciate Dr. Ramey and Dr. Braybrand, your work with us and with this new committee to put this together. I definitely support changing the pay cycle, because I think we've definitely heard from our teachers, and I know how difficult it is, especially for new teachers, to be able to do that. When it comes to, I'll just try to go through in order, the Veterans Day. I know we discussed the possible two-hour early release, which is something I also heard from several constituents. Was that brought forward? Was that discussed at all?
No, I'm not, back to the earlier, I've not heard a lot back about moving away from the three-hour back to the two-hour early release. Are you saying an additional one?
Sorry, creating an early release on Veterans Day as opposed to changing the holiday?
No. This year, actually, Veterans Day is on a Sunday, and so the observance would be on the Monday. And we didn't hear any feedback on doing an early release on that day. I'm sorry, next year's, not the one reflected in this calendar.
Okay. But the federal holiday is on the Monday, correct? November 13th? I mean, in the 12th, I'm looking through on that. Yes, okay. Well, I mean, I would have supported that. I'm not sure. So when you say feedback, that was in the question that was asked to...
So we didn't really go out and ask those questions. What the next step from the 13th meeting was to provide options for those. And so I just looked at the calendar, and we tried to come up with some options that would allow that. I didn't take the next step as go out and survey the public on those two days.
No, just wanted to be clear about that. And then I guess my question is regarding that, where, I was actually wondering, after our last conversation, was the committee involved in looking at this latest option? Or was that not?
No, we didn't bring the committee back together.
Okay. And then, okay. So definitely, A, I appreciate that you are working on a calendar. I know we've shared Arlington County, and in the past, we have a rabbi who has sent a letter individually to every single principal. So I believe in Arlington and perhaps Montgomery County, that comes from the superintendent. So I hope that we do, and we are clear about, it's just education, right? This is what this means for our students, for our holidays. This is, you know, even explaining when they start in the evening, so when students may be out, students that may be fasting. I know we've had field trips, testing, and festivities on those days in the past. So it is an issue. It's not, we're not trying to create something. It is a concern we've had. So do you have a sense of when that will be prepared? I assume with the calendar, before it goes out, the official calendar, correct? I just...
I can't commit to that, because we do want to give our families as much advance notice as we can for the next standard calendar. So as soon as this is approved, we'll get this posted. I'm not sure I'll have the calendar with the religious holidays ready to go as early as next Friday. But we'll work on it in short order and try to get it up as soon as possible.
Okay. Well, I would love to follow up, and it's only because this is, Dr. Garza, I had asked her for the same thing, and this is just kind of longtime ask, that I would like to ensure is timely this year.
Let's, if I could, since the work session, Chase, what's reasonable to get those calendars on? I got it next week. What do you think would be reasonable?
I mean, the one with the religious holidays, we can get it up by the end of January.
Okay. And I would just love to ensure, you know, making sure that the committee and the Voice representatives have a chance. And I'd like to make sure and see how it compares.
Sure. And as I said, I can follow up with the Voice. Dr. Duran and I had a great conversation with them in the middle of November, and so we can definitely circle back with them.
Okay. And I'd also like to put you in touch with the person who does this with Montgomery County, because that would be helpful, just make sure we're not reinventing the wheel and doing it well. I appreciate that. For the Yom Kippur, you know, as I've said before, I think it's helpful that Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Aradah do not fall on school days for next year. Rosh Hashanah, both days, and Yom Kippur all fall at the beginning of the year. And so that is difficult for students and staff. I know for the calendar, for the percentage attendance, while overall, we assumed it wouldn't be a huge amount, is it possible to break it down, or is that a little too much into student information for, but to have a better breakdown by schools or pyramids?
That would be me committing one of my colleagues. I'm looking at Mary Beth. Attendance by pyramid or by school?
I see. That might be too sensitive for Boise.
We can look at it.
So it is a concern. You know, on the upside, I assume if we moved it to a Wednesday, probably we'd have less teachers out for a longer weekend, but we are used to having it on the weekend. So, I mean, I will support Ms. Evans. I do think it's important that we have the ability to move a couple of days in order to make it easier for our staff and our students to not miss so much school. But I guess besides that, is there the possibility of, if not that, an early release on that Wednesday? Is that what we're looking, I'm still confused.
The One Pager proposal was... The, the one pager proposal was to move the Friday early release to Wednesday.
Oh, so it is.
And we gave you that on the business case as an option.
No, it's Wednesday because it starts Tuesday night. It's on Wednesday. Okay. The actual day is Wednesday, the 19th, which is why I want this letter because even we're confused. Yeah, so I would support that, moving it to the Wednesday. It's, so it's just a, well, a three-hour early, early release, correct? That's what we're seeing. And it is, that day is a teacher-related school planning day?
Yes.
No, it's required PD. It's not, is it staff-driven or not staff-driven?
That would be school planning, so it's school leadership-driven.
School leadership-driven. Okay. Okay.
And, and just to point out clarification, so the Eid holiday in June for this calendar, actually, you have to, this is why it does get really confusing. You have to look at the calendar 2019. And so Eid falls on June 5th.
Nineteen, we're looking.
We've already worked with Bill Curran about graduation and other, other events needing not to fall on that day. So Eid is during the school year. I just want to everybody to be clear.
Thank you.
Don't want you to get feedback and be like, wait, right, no.
But we need it in here. Thank you. I looked at the wrong year. Okay, so it is on what day you said?
June 5th.
It starts the evening of the 4th or the evening of the 5th, do you know?
I believe it starts the evening of the 4th.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Dahlia and Nehrika, Karen Corbett Sanders and Megan.
Okay, so quick question about first quarter. Is it possible to move the end of the quarter to the Wednesday? And like the Wednesday as in October 31st? And then move the school planning day to the 1st? And then Ms. Schultz mentioned this suggestion about combining two of the early, like some of the early releases into one day. Could you combine the early release from December and January for that Friday, for November 2nd? So basically, the quarter would end on the 31st and the 1st and the 2nd would be off. Because a lot of our seniors in particular have mentioned that that is one of the most stressful times of the year because the quarter ends right at the same time the early apps are due. And the way that our quarter ends, it ends right after early apps are due. So it's a little hard to get those first quarter grades into colleges. Is that a possibility?
We, we can always consider that. So what that would create is we'd have to add a day, a student day to the calendar. And so we'd have to either probably extend the end of the school year to the 14th. And then we'd also set up a scenario where students weren't in school on a Thursday, Friday, would have to come back for a Monday and then would be off again on Tuesday. And so I think that that would, we'd have some concerns about attendance rates if we were going to give families or students three out of four days off at the one in the middle. It's obviously something the board can consider and we can make that work. But there would be some, I think, some challenges and also some attendance concerns by setting the calendar like that.
Okay. Well, I, I, just to everyone else on the board, I'd like to see if we could potentially do that because we all, Election Day also isn't a holiday for a lot of families. So it's possible that if we had Monday as school, but then gave Tuesday off, it's, we may not have some of the attendance issues, but I do understand what Dr. Ramey is saying. But just kind of, or if we could just move the end of the quarter and not like to the Wednesday and then just leave the 1st and 2nd as they are for the rest of the calendar. Is that a possibility?
Yes, I, I think it is. The challenge there would be for our teachers. I'm not sure when grades would be due, but to not have a teacher workday directly after the quarter creates a challenge. But it's, it's definitely something that, that we could consider.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Karen Corbett Sanders, then Megan.
Thank you. And thank you very much for working on the teacher pay in August. I know this was a challenge this year and I'm very happy to hear that you can fix it for next year. I have a question regarding professional development days and whether or not we give the flexibility. We, we hear all the time about teachers needing childcare for their own children when they have these professional development days. So are we providing options, not for all of them, but for some of them to actually be online professional development? And perhaps even giving them a window to accomplish the professional development so that they have the flexibility with their own families in providing that balance? I have a couple other questions. Do you want me to go through all of them?
I'll, I'll enter this one real quick. So a lot of the online trainings, we actually developed a day at the beginning of the calendar. You'll see in August, the 24th, is we've set that day aside for the completion of some of those mandatory trainings. I know it doesn't get to all of your, your concern. But we have specifically done this so that teachers don't have to spend their own time or time when we believe that other meaningful professional development can take place in their building or at their grade level during the school year. And so we've tried to carve out a day that that will be done. I know that doesn't address the childcare issue. We do have two of the teacher workdays in the calendar that are available for work from an alternate location. But those are tied to actual teacher workdays, not the school-directed or professional development days that are embedded in the early releases.
Thank you. That actually brings me to my next question, which is that on August 17th, that requires for many of our teachers who actually have summer employment, that they would not be able to get that third week of employment in August, the third, or the second full week. And if that day could be a flexible day so that we are not curtailing our teachers' ability to earn supplemental income during that time or to go to the beach with their families or things like that. The, I know that we have the new teachers earlier in the week, but that would be one day that it would be helpful, I think, for our, our existing teachers in its sense of positive message. Want me to go to the next?
That, that's something the board can consider. We have them, right now, the work from an alternate location day set as the day in November, which is something that both our teachers and our building administrators thought was a very good idea. So the teachers didn't have to come to the building on Election Day. And the second one is set for the Friday after the school year ends because as families are trying to get away for the summer or after the, after the year's over, that was also a suggestion. But if the board would like to move that optional or work from an alternative location day from the 14th of June to the 17th of August, that's, that's definitely something that we could consider and a change that we could incorporate into the calendar.
What would prevent us from doing both? Why do you, why, why two versus three? Just out of curiosity.
The, the regulation is, that's the language in the regulation. I don't think technically there is anything that would keep it. I mean, I do think there's value to having our staff in the schools on their days of work. And so I would be hesitant to raise that or to give unlimited ability for staff to work from alternate locations on those teacher workdays. And I know you weren't saying unlimited. I know you were saying from two to three. But I, I think it is something where as we look at that, how, how far, how broad do we want to make that, that ability?
I just think as a caring culture, having that day in August creates a challenge for so many of our staff. And so I would like to see the flexibility on the 17th for that. And now I would like to go into September. I certainly support Ms. Evans' suggestion on the early release being moved to Yom Kippur as a blended family or an interfaith family. I know how important it is. So I would, I would certainly support that. And going into November, I just have one quick question. Is there anything that prevents us from splitting the staff professional development and the teacher workday so that maybe what we could do is do the teacher workday on the 5th and possibly moving the school planning day to, to Labor Day to accommodate some of the concerns there? I mean, Veterans Day, thank you. Cold medicine's not great for me today. I apologize. Yeah, actually, I, I realize I, I made a mistake because we do need to have the
Election Day.
Election Day, so that probably doesn't work. But what I was suggesting is that we have a two-day holiday there. And if we could just do two Mondays in a row, but that doesn't seem to work. So never mind on that one. And the last question has nothing to do with this specific calendar, but just encouraging as soon as possible that we can get to the second year calendar. And then as a, I will be making a motion that says that going forward, we actually continue on a two-year cycle because our families, both those that are teachers and professionals in the system, as well as our families in the community really like and are craving for the more, more reliability and planning time.
Earlier in the work session, I think this fall, we were directed to have that. And I've directed Dr. Ramey to have that presented to you no later than March of this coming year for the year after. So you'll have this calendar now and the calendar for '20 by March for your review.
And just one last, we did talk about leave, leave use last year in the context of substitute use. And at that time, we had a follow-on motion to have a plan come back to us on that. Do we have a timing on when that plan is going to come back to us, Dr. Ramey?
I, I don't have a date. I mean, it'll be in the next several months. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't give you a more specific date. But we would want to implement going before next school year. And so I understand that we need to give as much notice as possible, but I, I don't have a specific data when we bring that back.
Can I ask that a update on when we can expect that be provided in a future Braybrand brief, please? Great, thank you.
Okay, Megan?
So I'll start with echoing things that I heard from my colleagues. Absolutely, I, I think it's going to be universal that this board is very pleased about the August pay for our teachers. I, I very well remember my first job and it is extremely hard to go more than a month without pay. So, you know, being able to, to put that in place, I think, was essential. And certainly something I heard from quite a few teachers. Removing the blackout days for our teachers, I think, is also, was a, was an important move. Chase, I do share your concerns and I would suspect most of our colleagues do. 6,000 additional substitute requests only at this stage of the school year is enormous. I would like, and Dr. Braybrand walked away, so somebody captures the next step. I'd like to know what that cost is. I mean, 6,000 more over last year? What is that already? And we're, we're just in November. And especially since you're seeing a pattern of Mondays and Fridays. That's, that's problematic. In terms of that August 17th for our returning teachers, I am in 100% agreement with Ms. Corbett Sanders and anyone else who shares concern there. I have heard this from teachers in the past. I'm not comfortable having our returning employees start back on a Friday. We pushed back on a pre-Labor Day start, which not every family in Fairfax County, in fact, by a slim majority, the survey was people didn't want a pre-Labor Day start. So I, I think we've got to figure out some flexibility, Chase. I appreciate that you heard my, my mumbling that no one's advocating for unlimited, you know, work-from-home days. But I, I, that one to me is, I very strongly want to see that happen. And I'm a little nervous because, I mean, we're voting on this on Thursday, everybody. So we, we've got to really scramble if we're going to put in a bunch of these changes. But I hope we'll, you know, maybe this is something that you and, and Dr. Braybrand can confer on. If you need us to put in amendments, Ms. Corbett Sanders, I'm very supportive of that.
My parliamentary procedure is not exactly up to date, but I think you will have to because this version of the calendar
Is all there.
was on New Business this, this last week.
That's fine. I didn't know if there was a, you know, administrative, I mean, you guys, it's been brought forward, but it's always the superintendent who's, who's proposed this and now it's on there. But let's put it this way, it's not the first time that I've seen something where the superintendent says, "We revised this a little bit and this is what it looks like." But from, from a, from a transparency standpoint, I have no problem. Maybe that's a better way that we make sure the public sees that we, the board saw this as an improvement, so.
Yes, yeah, there are, if, at this point, if board members are anticipating amendments, they need to come in as quickly as possible.
I, I agree with that, but I will, I will respectfully push back a little bit that I don't know why this is, how this has happened this way. But I think everybody can agree, you cannot have a work session again to try and deal with something that's complicated the calendar and then, you know, have the expectation that, oh, and by the way, file it by the end of tonight. I mean, we're going to have to try and get these in tomorrow. But I, I think the macro concern that's been raised, and I think I heard you saying, Dr. Braybrand, is we just got to get a calendar process that's much sooner than, than this one here. And, and maybe that'll help solve the problem we're facing right now with voting right before the winter break on something that's going to take place in less than a year. So the other thing is that I, I will tell you, I have heard this from families as well, what Ms. Schultz said. This three-hour release versus a two-hour release and productive learning, and maybe Nehrika, you can speak to it as a student. But my boys found a two-hour release was almost questionable about, you know, effective learning. And, and three, I, I just, I mean, we have basically almost cut the day in half. And I, that's not student-centered in my book. I don't, I don't even know what other school districts in the region, let alone the country, adopt a three-hour versus a two-hour and how many days a year? I mean, I'm not that old and I can tell you, I didn't have these early release days in my public school education. And I'm really concerned that, you know, again, three, three hours, I think, starts to create real problems. So to my colleagues, I think we got to be really serious about this. I'm, I'm, I would, again, Dr. Ramey and Dr. Braybrand, I appreciate that the calendar committee and the teachers and the principals were looking at it from their vantage point. But to date, Fairfax County has functioned extremely well with two-hour release. Going to three, just because it feels like that would allow for more in-depth learning, but it's at the cost of student learning. So I really feel strongly that three hours is the wrong way to go. I really appreciate my colleagues who brought up the religious holidays. I appreciate Ms. Palczek, you've been, you know, someone who spoke very strongly on this. Last year, we did this. I think it's essential that we reinforce to all of our teachers because I have heard from the community that not all the teachers seem to understand the importance of observing these holidays with not having important tests, quizzes, projects, field trips or even special events. So that's, that's got to be worked out. With Veterans Day, I would like to suggest that we have a compromise. And if you look at the calendar, we have an early release staff development day on October 19th. And so I would suggest that we consider having an early release staff development day on November the 12th, which is where Veterans Day is observed. When I talked to, to military families this year at one of our celebrations, they said, you know, the best of all worlds is we come in in the morning and we get to, you know, see our children in school and attend these Veterans Day celebrations. And then we could take our kids home early and have the rest of the, the remembrance day with our families. So that, that's something that I'm going to be considering as an amendment. Does that make sense? Or you're just wanting me to wrap up, Mr. McVeigh? Well, that's what happens when you go last. You get to comment on everything. Because, I mean, it's kind of a work session. We don't just speak to the superintendent. We should be kind of getting, yeah, getting ideas from each other. I, I did have a question that was raised, Dr. Ramey, by our teacher associations. In terms of moving to an 11-month pay cycle, how does that impact the healthcare deductions as well as ERFC and VRS?
So we currently pull out deductions for health over 10-month for all employees. And so we don't see changing that at all. In terms of deductions for VRS and ERFC, they will be taken out of, of those paychecks as well.
So it's only the healthcare that's going to stay at 10 months?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's how it is for, for our 12-month employees right now.
It's done in a 10-month cycle as well. It's done in a 10-month cycle as well. Okay. And then, one thing that I wanted to have, to sort of clarify, Dr. Ramey, because I remember you talked about this before, that it was under Dr. Gars' tenure that I believe we looked at giving more than three days? Was it five personal days?
Correct, we did increase it to five personal days.
Because one of the things, Dr. Brabran, that I think you stepped out for a minute, but I was saying, 6,000 substitute days, and we're not even through the first, you know, three months, four months of school, you know, just into the start of the first, the second quarter. It's a concern. I think we've got to look into that. My two brothers-in-law work for public school systems on the East Coast, and it's my understanding they get two to three days max during a school calendar year. And that's just because, again, it's not just disruptive to student learning, which is number one, but number two, we run into the problem of it is a cost to the system. We're trying to reduce class size. If anyone looks at the line item on what we spend on substitute, it is enormous. We've got to rein that in, and I think that's where we find money. But I think, you've all heard me say this before, the best way we approach this is we look at what the region offers. If the other school districts around the region are offering up to five personal days, then we got to wrestle with that. But if we did something that is kind of out of step with the norm, and it's coming at a cost to our substitute line item and the cost to consistent student learning, then I think that's something we've got to tackle. And then I'm very supportive of the move for Yom Kippur, whoever's going to put that forward. I think that's a reasonable approach, and it's a win-win for our community.
Okay, so we have a number of go-backs. Please keep them to one to two minutes tops. Sandy Elizabeth Dahlia?
Just very briefly, I do appreciate, Dr. Brabran, you giving us the report on attendance. I will say that there certainly are schools where that is very, very different. If you go to Glen Forest on Eid, you'll see that about a quarter of the students are not there. So even though this looks like it's not a big impact for Eid, for some of our schools, it really, really is. So, and I don't know that we need to do this. Again, we did do this a few years ago. And I would say that we have been saying for a while, we're going to make sure that all of our principals, all of our teachers know that, you know, what, where do the major holidays? But we still hear from students who are saying it's not necessarily, you know, at their school, they're still seeing a problem. And parents saying, my child has to choose between their religious obligations in their school. So I do think we need to do something about that. I appreciate the support. I've heard from some of my colleagues, I, one, two, three, four, I'm hearing about five. I'll be talking with some other folks to see if it looks like their support for changing that early release day, in which case I would, I would offer an amendment for that. Let me ask you one question, Dr. Ramey. The calendar that has the religious holidays on it, are you planning to do just major religious holidays or the whole kit and caboodle? I mean, when we send out, the reason I'm asking, when we send out this quarterly report, there are a lot of things captured in there. And not necessarily every one of the religious holidays that we put on our list are things where students feel they need to take the day off. So what is your plan for that?
We're probably, we're going to look at Arlington and Montgomery and some of their counties and see what they're doing. Talk to Voice, talk to some community organizations, and try to capture as many as we can. Or I can't give you a final answer on exactly which ones will be on there and which ones won't at this point.
Okay, because I do think that would be important because I do think at times, there's such a long list that the major ones can get lost in that. So I would just make that.
And on your point on that list, we will do our best to communicate and put the new calendar out. But if you are hearing back from your families about where things are not being followed or being observed at student, at certain schools, let us know so that we can follow up with those regions and those schools just with a reminder and make sure that we're doing that.
And actually, as I shared earlier, and I know governance is still looking at it, but my initial request from you all is to contact the RAS. If the parent has gone to the school and shared and still has concerns, please direct them to the Regional Assistant Superintendent so that we can take care. I think most of our principals are very well-intentioned, something that Ms. Strauss said that I think is true. Sometimes when new leadership comes in, really understanding the community and knowing that, wow, there's a large number of Jewish students or Muslim students who won't be in, is a cultural adjustment. It is. So we'll work to do that, and we'll have that calendar with the dates in it we've already shared earlier by the end of January to you and to the community.
Okay, thanks, Sandy. Elizabeth Dahlia, Karen Corbett Sand.
Okay, a couple of things. Why can't we take, why can't the kids just go back to school August 27th? And we have that day for Veterans Day? And I'm really worn out of my colleagues, frankly, the ones who say, "Well, you know, people won't come in." Yes, they will. Every single year, I attend veterans events. Every single year, they say, "We don't care when it is, we will be here." When Veterans is on a weekend, and it's just observed another day, we're not celebrating. We don't, we don't say that about any other holiday. Nobody says, "Well, if people aren't in school, you know, on Martin Luther King Day, they can't learn about Martin Luther King, so we're going to cancel Martin Luther King Day." So it doesn't work to just say, "Well, if the children are in school, they can't learn about Veterans Day." It is the only national holiday we don't acknowledge, and we have the highest percentage of veterans of any other county in the United States. So why, why did we pick the 27th? Why not just go back to school the 27th?
We could go back the 27th. You're saying that would either mean that Veterans Day would actually need to be a teacher work day?
I don't know, I don't know. I'm working, and I'll talk to my colleagues. Second of all, I'm really.
Part of the reason was, is again, because the request from our staff, from our teachers, was more professional development at the beginning of the year. And so it's adding those days at the beginning of the year.
I understand that that which is best for children is often inconvenient for adults. I'll keep, I'll keep, keep saying that. And if we don't, if we can't get this part right, I don't know what we can get right. I'm concerned, Ms. Evans, about, and my other colleagues, about the talk about moving days, early release days, for certain religions and not for others. There are seven holy days of obligation for Catholics in the annual calendar, several of which fall within an academic year. We're not giving Catholic kids All Saints Day or Ascension. I mean, there's a lot of days that are, have a religious connotation to them for different religions. And if we start down this road, I don't know how we, where you stop. Because everybody else is going to say, "Well, you're moving early release days, or you're altering your calendar to accommodate what we're already accommodating." I mean, we have, in our direction, is you are not going to penalize a family, or you're not going to penalize, and we created, as Dr. Ramey just indicated, two additional personal leave days for our employees. We're not going to penalize anyone for celebrating their faith, for having a faith-based obligation that keeps them home from school as a child or not coming to work as an employee. We provide those accommodations. And if we solidify, as I'm hearing from Dr. Brabran, his absolute commitment to reinforce with our principals and our administrators not to schedule tests, not to schedule quarter end or grades due. Otherwise, you know, and I'm not certain, but maybe, I'm the only person here who has had their children in religious school, other than public school. So I understand the sacrifice and the commitment of being a religious education, not public school parent. And I also understand the obligation of being a public school parent but maintaining, you know, a faith-based center for students. And they're not mutually exclusive, but we can't start crafting a calendar without accommodating all of the requests because you can't decide which ones you're going to accommodate and which ones you're not going to accommodate. Because then you're picking and choosing who's going to win on a calendar. And this is a slippery slope that we will never get back of, get back from in a county where we have 200 different countries represented and many, many faith traditions, and no faith traditions. I can also see a significant pushback from people who don't have a faith tradition to say, "You have changed a calendar to accommodate people of a faith tradition, and now you're discriminating against my child, who is not getting a full academic day because you're accommodating somebody in a position of faith." And so I'm, I'm very concerned about the nature of this conversation for a public school calendar. And I will be talking and looking for a solution for us, no different than the last six years, for us to acknowledge the veterans who have given us the right to even have this conversation.
Tom, real quick.
Thank you, Ryan. So just, just on a couple of points that, I think that on August 17th, that issue that Ms. Corbett Sanders raised about teacher flexibility. I'd like to see us try harder to give the teachers flexibility, particularly when it involves their professional development. And in this case, since we're asking them to come in on a Friday, that seems like a give that if we can give it to the teachers would really encourage them that we're actually thinking about them. And I, and that is the one comment I have received from several different teachers in advance of this meeting is that, "Why do I have to come back on that Friday?" And because they have families, they've got children, and it's just, it doesn't make sense to them. I think on the early release point, I just want to underscore what Ms. McLaughlin talked about, the getting released three hours early. What does that do to that learning day? And, you know, what are we accomplishing with those kids at the cost of transporting the entire population of kids to the schools on those days? I think we should, I'm not sure the, you know, I fully understand the genesis of going to the three-hour early release. I assume it was because we thought we could get more thorough professional development. I would opt to figure out ways to empower our teachers as professionals to find what they want, as opposed to requiring that they have longer stints of teacher work professional development at the schools, physically at the schools. I think that we ought to be asking them, what did, what would they want? They're the professionals, to help them with their own professional development. I'm not so sure that this making it a longer solves that problem. And then finally, one comment I would just make in terms of Veterans Day. I don't know if anyone had the chance to watch the Army-Navy game this weekend. But, yeah, that's right, we won. Ms. Corbett Sanders says, "We won." Ms. Schultz, you lost. But a terrific comment was made by one of the cadets. He said, what, you know, I think it was a cadet, I said, "What makes this game special?" Or maybe it was a coach. He said, "What makes this game special is that everybody playing the game, and all of the cadets and midshipmen in the stands watching the game, would give their lives for everybody watching the game." And I think we can't forget that, that these are the people that give their lives for others willingly. And we just, if we can figure out a way to honor them by giving them that holiday, I would be in favor of it.
Okay, thanks, Tom. So we're going to do 30 seconds to a minute for everyone. Left, Dahlia, Karen Corbett Sanders, Nehirika, and Janie.
Thank you, I will be brief. Number one, as we prepare for the next one, I think, and I appreciate this was the first time we reconvene the committee, and I had asked for that last year, and so I'm glad we're doing that. I guess one thing I would ask, since we're speeding up next year, is A, to get the community input before the committee convenes, because I think it's kind of putting the cart before the horse. You know, it's like, they're coming, but without the input from the community, which is who they're supposed to be representing those few. So, I mean, if you want, you know, help from us and input on the survey up to the community, I would ask that that happen. Because I think that's kind of why we got a few calendars from the committee that didn't reflect what we were looking for. So A, I'm happy to have that conversation offline of what should be brought to the committee for that, for that session. Number two, when we talk about encouraging or fixing the leave policy, I'd like us to, I hope we're looking at ways to encourage and not just deter. I don't know if there are ways to do that, best practices that are trying to encourage teachers when we know we want them there, to be there with some kind of bonus hours or something. I would appreciate that. And then when it comes to the beginning of the calendar, I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin, that is something I meant to bring up is, and I've heard from teachers and as a teacher, more than one day to prep your classroom is not really necessary. That is asked for. So A, yeah, I'm not sure that we have to start class on a Tuesday since we don't have that holiday in August, it's now later. So, and B, that coming back a Friday, when many of us do. I worked all summer last year, had one day off. And so it is really challenging, especially teachers who are working all summer, to at least have the last full week to rest before they come, and they can be a little bit more ready for a new school year. So whether we move it to the end of the year, or I don't know if we can at that point, if that teacher work day, can we just move it to September 21st or November 12th? Like, can that be moved, or is that a regulation of when that teacher work day is?
No, I mean, it can be moved. At the end of the day, we have to have 180 student days and 194 teacher days.
Right. So my question is, right, if, this might be, I know, I know, but there are a lot of new things that come up. So could, I guess that would make the school day later if we move June 17th to be the work-from-home teacher work day?
I'm sorry? No, if.
A little bit out of the box.
June 17th or August 17th? I'm sorry.
I'm trying to see if we move the 17th. Right. I don't know if I can.
One thing, one thing that may be possible, and I'm, you know, I'm doing work sessions with you on learning. Like, I guess I can work in the work session with you all, but I don't want to take too much time, just different ideas. The 17th could be optional. I mean, we can go back, the reg is our, my reg, and I could make it three days and just call it optional. That's probably easy to do and solves. Those that really can't make it in, they find other time to make sure they get that done.
Right.
Right? Unless somebody weighed for me and leadership team members, if there's some.
I think as long as it's an alternate work location or they find another day to work, we cannot say Friday is an optional work day.
It's an.
Right, alternative. So they're prepping their classroom, if they come in earlier over the weekend later.
Right, they could even come earlier, yeah, they could come earlier from the campus. So we could do one on that. I don't even know whether, this is one of these, I'm not even sure I should, and I haven't talked to Chase. Should I just go for it and see what happens? I don't know, trying to get you guys to close. If you wanted another holiday, Chase, if we, if we moved the first day of school to the 27th, right? I'm just throwing out an idea. That gives us one more day for a holiday, wherever you would want to put it. Could you put the teacher work day in place of the early release in November before Thanksgiving?
Oh, November.
Okay, okay, all right. That's, that's why I thought, maybe, just the thought, maybe, I was thinking, okay. We can do the optional day for the, the alternate work day for that Friday, and we can just put that into the calendar that we present to you on Thursday.
But so is it too late to consider that 27th teacher work day and moving that to September or November? No?
I was shaking my head because I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. Well, so either, and I support an early release on the 12th. I think that's a good compromise. I'm not sure why that, I know you guys didn't bring it up, we brought it up last time. But so either moving the teacher work day to September 21st and moving the early release to the 19th, but that might be too short, or moving it to, I guess the only thing is we're starting to make the quarter longer. First quarter is already. First quarter is already really long, right?
It's a challenge.
And I know Nehirika brought that up. Unfortunately, now we're kind of going back and revisiting a lot of things. So I'm sorry that this is taking so long, right? So can, at this point, moving the quarter end is a little bit tricky, because we would have to move the teacher workdays.
Correct.
Correct. And how many days do teachers generally have to turn in grades after the quarter ends? Two days? Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, I don't know where it would go, but I do support making that first teacher workday a little bit later, so that we actually start on the Monday. Part of why we're starting school early is to get as much learning in before the winter break. So that's why, I'm not sure why we have to have school start on Tuesday, but I don't. Sorry, and just to say, like, this process, and I appreciate it, but I would love for us to review this process, because I think we're kind of going back and forth too much, and some of that could be ameliorated with more of the feedback being brought in soon, that's all.
Okay, last three, Karen Corbett Sanders, Nehirika, and Janie, very short, please.
Short piece, I had talked about the August 17th, and you, Dr. Ramey, suggested that I might have to do a calendar amendment. I don't think I need to do a calendar amendment, given that it's a TW, and the TW gives the flexibility as long as, as a follow-on action, we have Dr. Braybrand, and you look at the reg to correct that. And we can do that as a follow-on action to this session today.
That's fine, I just didn't want to, I just didn't want to step out of parliamentary procedure. That's all I was saying, because the calendar was already on new business last week. I wasn't trying to stand in the way of making the changes.
But it's not changing the, this calendar staying the same. It's that we're addressing the reg. So if I could have a follow-on motion, or follow-on that we, next steps. Perfect, that's what I'm asking for. Alternate location workday.
Yeah, optional work from alternate location, which is noted on the others. Optional work from.
No, not optional.
No, 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 it's not. Workday with optional location. We'll get the language right before Thursday.
Yeah, we'll see that momentarily.
Thank you. And then I just want to briefly address the three-hour early release. We went from half-day Mondays throughout the county for all of our elementary schools. Our families were able to deal with half-day Mondays. Essentially, this is what we're doing on five separate occasions with the early releases. And it does allow us to be able to, it does allow us to be able to address the concerns.
We're going to have to open up discussion for everyone.
Okay, can I, am I allowed to finish or no? Okay. So I really do think that the three hours, we heard from the professionals that three hours is what's needed for professional development. What I think we should do is perhaps work with the Fairfax County Council of PTAs and other groups in the community to make sure that there's real and meaningful enrichment activities at all of our schools that allow for something for our kids to do during that time period. And then last, I certainly would support if people wanted to move the early release and Development Day from the 19th of October to the 12th of November. I think that's a wonderful way of both providing an opportunity for veterans to be recognized in the schools, as well as create that opportunity for half-day with their families, as Mrs. Schultz suggested. Thank you.
Okay, Nehirika.
Thank you. Regarding the three-hour early release, I know my experience is a little different, because whenever we have two-hour early releases, we just kind of drop the eighth period that we normally use for extracurricular activities, and then it doesn't really affect our academic schedule so much, yeah. But that's only at my school. At the other schools, shortening, even two hours takes away at least half an hour from each of your classes, assuming you have four on that day. And at the point of three hours, it kind of make, it doesn't really make sense to go to school. In my opinion, especially at the high school level, where a lot of kids are now stressed out about their now 30-minute or one-hour classes, instead of being able to, for example, stay home and actually work on some of those assignments. And I think it might be a good idea, like Ms. Schultz said, to combine some of the early releases into like a day, like a teacher workday, school planning day, so that our students don't have to go home three hours early and just kind of go to school and then get turned around after only a few classes or not that much academic time. Thank you.
Okay, Janie.
First of all, remember that the broad outlines of this calendar were worked on with the teacher professional organizations. And they asked for the three-hour early release, because we need to treat our educators as professionals. So that is where it came. We will always have some, you know, individual issues with individual people coming back with us. So the three-hour early release came from the professional organizations. And also in front-loading the teacher, beginning the teacher professional development, however it's designated, the beginning of the year. Again, that came from the teacher professional organizations. Also, remember that as a public school system, we have families that will not register until school opens. And so that last weekend before school starts, often you have schools that are reorganizing their grade-level instruction. They're doing one last reorg of the entire school building. And unless you have been through that with your schools, that is a huge issue. So that those days at the beginning of the school year is that, you know, you've got two more fourth graders, and we're going to have to open another class, and we've got to hire another teacher. There's a tremendous amount of scrambling in those last couple of days. And I think that's also why the professional organizations ask for that front-loading at the beginning of the year, rather than at the end of the year. There is just huge, heavy lifting in probably more schools than what you realize. So my remarks at the end.
Hey, Karen Keisgamar.
I will be quick. First of all, thank you. I know this is not an easy task. It's sort of like herding cats, and trying to please everybody is extremely difficult. So I just wanted to give you a breather there. With respect to August 27th, I personally don't have a lot of objection to it, but I have received a lot of feedback from people who were arguing a lot about at the earliest start on the 28th. So I would have some concerns about, at this juncture, changing that date, because people were just having some very strong reactions, let me say it that way. I would like to, if at all possible, to minimize the three hours. I do think that that release times, I do think that that is difficult for families to try to figure that out. Those Monday, half-day Mondays were particularly hard for working parents. And so I just think is, to have that in mind as much as possible. I think you're trying to balance it, but just keep that in mind. And I'm very concerned about the, you know, the huge increase in the use of substitutes. And so I guess you're already looking into why that's happening. I would love to hear why that's happening, so we have an opportunity to talk about it. Thanks.
Okay, Megan.
So Mr. McAvine, I know it's throwing your excellent management, and I apologize, but I feel very strongly that we should not leave this room so that there's at least some clarity on this three-hour early release. I'm very worried about any comparisons to early release Mondays. This has nothing to do with early release Mondays. This has everything to do with the fact that we are trying to optimize student learning. And anyone, especially if you've had kids at the high school level, when they have these two-hour early release days, the kids all talk about it. The teachers can't help it, it's truncated learning, and everybody's just breezing through the day. It is what it is. You are, when you go to a three-hour release for five more days in the school year, literally, you've cut the day in half. And so I don't understand that, yes, I would agree, we got this input during the calendar work with our teacher associations. And I think, as I see two of them here in the audience, they know I've been advocating extremely hard for our teachers as professionals. I actually believe our teachers as professionals would say that their number-one priority is to optimize student learning. And you're not optimizing student learning on a three-hour early release. We accommodate two-hour as best we can, but to make it three, I have not heard anything today where anyone's saying, "Why three now?" And yes, I understand that from a professional development, ideally, they would like to have three, but it's at the sacrifice of students. And so I want to prepare my colleagues. I am going to put in an amendment to address that. And I think that everyone better be really prepared to have a factual conversation about what three-hour early release does to kids and how you think that three hours is better than two in serving the needs of kids, which is the number-one priority of why we're here. I'm very worried to be listening to people defending a three-hour early release. Yes, that is what they would like. No, that does not help kids at all. So Ms. Keisgamar, appreciate you, you know, echoing and talking about the fact that, you know, three-hour is a problem. This is not about parent work and childcare, you guys, this is about student learning. And if you can defend that suddenly we've shortened the learning by three hours, that's a conversation I look forward to having on Thursday.
Seeing no one else, can we pull up the next steps? Oh, my. Okay. Okay, "Calendar to be posted with major religious holidays by end of January." I don't think that's a problem. Okay, "Break down attendance data by pyramid or school if possible." Mary Beth is looking into that. "Get community input before convening calendar committee." Great. "Two-year calendars will be presented beginning in March." Staff's okay with that? Provide information.
I'm sorry, I have a clarification on that. Is that accurate, or are we just, you're just, you're actually presenting the 2019-20 calendar?
Let me just double-check. Chase, do we have the waiver a year after in '21? Can we present them a two-year calendar, or just a calendar for?
I think this, I think I had requested the 2019-20 in our previous conversation.
Right.
I don't think that it's reasonable to go two years out, starting in the spring. I think the objective is to get a year ahead.
Right.
Yeah, we were just going to present 1920.
Right, I'm just trying to verify, Chase, doesn't our waiver, doesn't our waiver end after that? And we have to go back. So we're only going to present an additional one year, which is a two-year lookout for the board.
Right, so present the 2019-20 calendar.
Will be presented in March.
Thank you.
Can I go back? I'm good on that one. The one before, I would, and we don't need to do it today, would like some board clarification on exactly the type of input we're looking for from the community. As an example, there was some concern about the first two versions of the calendar starting a week earlier. Guidelines from the board on that, some broad guidelines about what type of things the board wants to see in the calendar would be very useful for our work. And so we don't bring something that's off-base from what the board is expecting. So I don't know, if there's someone in particular I could work with on that before we go out, but that would be helpful for us as we start looking at this next calendar.
Yeah, no, I don't know what would be best, whether the chair, I mean, if you are asking for me to collect that from the board and bring that to you, or, but we can discuss.
The question is whether or not the board wants to have a work session ahead of time for Chase. Let's talk Dr. Braybrand and Ms. Palchak on, this is always a difficult piece, because we don't want staff to go out and do a tremendous amount of work and then have us blow it up. That's not efficient.
No, we just want to bring you what you want to see. And we don't mind doing the work, I just, we want to be in the right sandbox before we go out and do it.
Okay, well, let's, maybe, maybe we have a school board discussion at some point before you go out again. All right?
Or a PEC, I think.
Yes, that's right, have some, either the board or a subset of the board to actually have that discussion.
I'm happy to have it.
Okay, so, "Calendar will be presented in March, and maybe include in that suggested opportunity for the board or a committee of the board to offer suggestions before March."
But that's for the one before, the community? Oh, okay. It will be for both, essentially, so probably we'll have to.
Yeah, community input, yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Okay, next.
One on 2019-20, that was something that I raised. And what I said was that, you know, starting this year, we need to put forward the 19-20 calendar. But as a approach, we should be going forward with a two-year calendar. No, I understand that, but then you put in two possible alternatives. But the reason you need to do that, or that we've gotten a lot of feedback from our community, is that for their own planning, they need to have a longer-term view. And so I would just suggest that in future years, present a two-year calendar.
Okay.
That should be me.
Okay. Okay, the next item is from Megan requesting information on the 6,000 substitute cost. Is that correct? As written? Next, superintendent designate August 17th as workday with optional. Since start of the year. Okay.
It's actually changing the regulation for August 17th, changing the regulation to allow for three optional work-location days.
And is that definite, or is that being discussed in cabinet, or what is this?
I don't have a problem, I mean, the regulation is administrations, we can change it from two to three days. Is there anything else that I'm missing that would be involved to do that?
Well, I would like to weigh, and I did some checking on the previous calendar. And when we look back to August 2016, we had a Friday start for teachers. We changed that date to a school planning day and asked our principals for flexibility on that date. So I don't know if it's really a regulation change, but we did have that Friday start, and did actually get some positive feedback from principals and teachers on having that day back with no encumbrances on their time to prepare for that Monday. We didn't do any formal surveys from staff, but we did get informal data from principals and teachers.
So I appreciate that, Mr. Smith. What I'm trying to get is the flexibility for our staff to have, to ensure that our staff has flexibility on that date, so that they don't.
I think we can work with that bullet. I find that there's complications after reviewing it, I'll let you know. I don't believe that.
Okay, great.
So then, just maybe, instead of saying revise regulation, superintendent to designate August 17th as a flexible workday. And that way, you have the flexibility one way or another, and I don't care if you call it SPTW or anything else.
Okay, next, we see.
And that should be me as well.
There's a possible amendment, I don't, Sandy, do you need, do you need to have this listed up here?
Yeah, alternate work location.
Yeah, does it need to be up there, or can we take that off? Okay, why don't we take that off? We usually don't put amendments on. Okay. Okay, well, yeah, I mean, or just send those in a separate document to the email board.
And, well, actually, Megan, I.
Okay, so with that seeing no concern, we move forward with all of these next steps. This is adjourned, we will take a 30-minute lunch break, we will be back at 1:48.